I'm on a rush today.
Salute the prayer. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for a direction which will lead our state to be strong and unified, and to continue the legacy of our founders. We will be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to get a better place to live and work. Amen.
To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Councilor Mercier.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Councilor Scott.
Here.
Councilor Yem.
Here.
Councilor Chow.
Here.
Councilor Dakota.
Here.
Councilor Getchea.
Here.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Councilor Leahy.
Here.
Eleven present.
Councilor Mercier.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Carlene Lovering, born and raised in Lowell. She was a graduate of St. Michael's School, Keith Hall, and Fitchburg State College, graduating with a B.S. in nursing. Carlene lived a life focused on caring for seniors, beginning at the age of 14 as a nurse's aide. Her dedication to the geriatric community was evident as an RN and then executive director of various facilities, including Northwood and Life Care of the Merrimack Valley in Bel Regga. Residents and family were comforted by her professionalism and her dedication. Carlene will be missed by her sister Karen Merchant and Gail Jaskel, her brother's former city manager John Cox, and Bob Cox, founder and executive director of the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell, her sister-in-law's Carlene McMahon Cox, Leslie Gagnon Cox, and Brenda Lovering, and many nieces and nephews, as well as great nieces and nephews. We offer our sympathy to her family, relatives, and her many friends. She will be truly missed. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who have died since our last meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Hey, Councilor. Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request a moment of silence for Charles Fitzpatrick, a resident of the Christian Hill neighborhood in Sennoble, section of Lowell, passed away on January 21st, surrounded by his loving family. He was the beloved husband of Catherine K. Webster Fitzpatrick, to whom he was married on February 4th, 1961. Charlie was a graduate of the Sacred Heart School in Keith Academy and earned a B.S. in Plastics Engineering from the Lowell Technological Institute. He retired after a long career at Lockheed Martin, formerly San Antonio Associates of Nashua, where he was a materials application engineer. After retirement, he worked as a math tutor in the Lowell school system. Charlie thoroughly enjoyed time with his kids and grandchildren, especially helping with homework, volunteering for field trips, and smiling with pride through many, many dance recitals, hockey games, and league games. He was also a coach, vice president, and treasurer for the Sennoble Baseball League. Charlie and Kay loved to travel and had been to Ireland, Poland, Italy, Canada, and many other wonderful places, but Hampton Beach was for family vacations with his kids and with his cousins when he was younger. Charlie was a huge fan of all the Boston sports, especially hockey, and never missed a televised golf tournament. Himself an avid golfer, not that great of a golfer, but more than anything, Charlie loved all genres of literature, from classics to political thrillers, biographies, or his beloved spiritual authors, there was always at least one book on his nightstand. A longtime member of the Order of Ancient Hybrionians, he was extremely proud of his Irish heritage. In the lifelong communitat of St. Michael's Church, he volunteered at CYO and Bingo, taught CCD, and was a member of the Vincent De Paul Society. In addition to his wife, Charlie leaves four children, Mara, Danny, Ryan, Steve, as well as loving grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. On a personal level, having grown up in Sennoble, the passing of Mr. Fitzpatrick is not only a loss for the Sennoble section of the city, but even a greater loss for the entire city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Clerk, if you would.
May they rest in peace. Before we start, I'd like to welcome Ms. Erica Samborn, UMass Lowell Community Psychology class. They're watching tonight's meeting. It's one of their winter assignments. Ms. Samborn is a Lowell resident who's been doing this for the past 15 years, either having her class attend the meeting or watching it through livestream. They're all together tonight, watching, 20 students in the class, so we just wanted to welcome them and see how the city's business gets done. Section 2, Mayor's Business 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion accepted, placed on file by Councilor Getchea, seconded by Councilor Janess. Section 3, City Clerk 3.1, Man's of the City Council Meeting, January 23rd, for acceptance. Motion by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Noon. All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Four, Utility Public Hearings, 4.1. All right, myself. Head back to City Council motions. 5.1, Councilor Mercier.
Mr. Mayor, can I suspend the rules to take 6.1B out of order, please?
Motion by Councilor Getchea, take 6.1B out of order, seconded by Councilor Janess.
Mr. Mayor, can we add 6.1A to that as well?
6.1A, and then we'll do B. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity. Looking at motion response B, obviously, is it's a good opportunity to introduce a gentleman that I had a great interest in meeting and talking with, the HR Director, which everybody has known, but I thought it'd be appropriate to bring Mr. Osborne up, just to introduce himself and say hello, so everyone has an opportunity to meet him and say hello. Mr. Osborne?
Good evening, Mayor Rourke, council members, residents home, residents in the chamber. Thank you for the warm greetings that I received over these past two days. I am so excited to be able to join Mayor, Mayor of the City. Being in a position to join this team is an opportunity I could not pass up. When I got to meet him and speak about where Lowell has been and where Lowell is heading, I'm excited about this opportunity. I will be brief. I'll share with you what the questions asked of me in the interview is, tell us about yourself. And I've always signed with something as simple as, I'm immigrant. I came to this country when I was young because my parents made the decision that America was the place for opportunity. And we seized on that opportunity for me and my two older brothers to get as much education as we possibly could. But it wasn't just about what we could get for ourselves, it was about what we could do for our community. So as I grew to be an adult, I was always looking for where can I make a contribution in the community. And having a job that allows my community service and my education met, that is where I come to be. Thankful for the confidence City Manager Rourke has by you. I look forward to working with all of you if I get to meet City Councilors a little bit.
Sorry. Do I have to do that again?
There you go. Sorry about that, Mr. Osborne.
No worries.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, man.
You don't have to repeat it, sir. You could just keep moving. Keep moving forward.
But, how about that? That better?
Yes.
Okay. So I look forward to getting to know you, City Councilors, a little bit better. You'll hopefully, once I get myself settled, I'll reach out to you because I want to learn a little bit more about all of you and your residents' needs so that I can best serve the city of Lowell. I am comforted by the fact that Mary Calery is not leaving the building, so I'm holding on to her as comfort, but I promised only to hold on for so long before I do let go. But thank you all, and I look forward to serving you all.
Mr. Osborne, thank you very much. Look forward to your service to the city. And I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment, I know myself as mayor and the city council, as well as the manager and his team, to recognize Mary Calery, who has served her city for almost, maybe over three decades now, of a human resources director for almost 20 years. She has put up with a lot, and you don't survive multiple managers, Ms. Calery, without doing great work and being, always being there for not only the manager, but for the council and for the residents of Lowell, so I ask you to come up and say hello. It's also good to know you'll be sticking around for a while, right? So yes, very good.
Would you like to speak, Mary? And we want to thank you for all the cupcakes you bought on Tuesdays, now that Mr. Osborne will have to buy us cupcakes on Tuesdays.
Councilor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to welcome Mr. Osborne to Lowell, Massachusetts, so you will be feeling at home because Lowell is a city of immigrants like yourself. We came from another land seeking opportunity away from the oppression, so welcome to Lowell, Massachusetts. What you just said remind me of what President Johnson said at his inauguration, ask not for your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. I think that's what your statement is, and you're going to be feeling at home. Welcome, sir.
That being taken care of, we also have one other motion response we've taken out of order, which was motion response A. Comments, Councilor Yem?
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Take that first.
Okay. Steve Eddington.
We're working, right? Okay, well, good. Yeah, Mayor Rourke, members of the city council, good to be with you this evening. I'm Steve Eddington. For nearly the past 30 years, I've been, I have served on the Lowell Celebrates Karawak Committee, the past president. Our current president is Mike Flynn, and we produce an annual Karawak Festival in early October. I'm here to speak to the item on the agenda about the Lowell bicentennial. Mike and I are very pleased to be a part of the planning process for that event, as you know, being observed in 2026. Lowell has an amazingly rich history, made up of many narratives over the past 200 years, and we at Lowell Celebrates Karawak will be looking to show how the Jack Karawak story is one notable piece of that larger and wonderful story of Lowell itself. We're very excited to do this. We've decided that the focus of our 2026 festival, keeping with the bicentennial theme, would be to highlight how Lowell defined Jack Karawak and vice versa. Karawak's portrayal of Lowell's Franco-American communities and cultures vividly comes through in his five Lowell-based novels that are set in the 1920s and the 1930s. They're historical pieces, as well as very well-written novels. Just, I just, as I just noted, they're an important piece of the greater Lowell story. And so Lowell Celebrates Karawak looks forward to being one component of what we feel will be a rich celebration of the 200 years that have made Lowell the exciting, diverse, multicultural city that it has become. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you for the overview and the plan for the event. It's going to be a big one, and I kind of searched a bit, March 1st, 1826, is it something like that? That's the city, the city of Lowell wasn't, wasn't city at the time. It became the town out of, away from Chumsford, and then 10 years later become the city. So I really am excited to see all the partners and stakeholders going to be part of this. So if I could make additional comments, you know, the Boys and Girls Club's going to finish their new buildings in 2016. 2025 Lowell Boys and Girls Club going to turn 125, so they can be part of that. And then Cambodia Town with all the gates and then all the parks going to be done at the same time, so maybe incorporate that also into festivity as well. And one other places that is a jewel of the city is the Lowell Auditorium, so there's going to be a lot of performance and stuff like that can be add-on. I did not see the Middlesex Community College, so they all could be part of the educational component that you laid out, right? So that will be really, really good. It's going to be a big one, and hopefully we have some sort of memento that people can either purchase and take it home, just like, you know, US Centennial Celebration. So before I end it, just want to correct myself. Mr. Osborne, it's the President Kennedy speeches that said, my colleagues said, not Johnson, President Kennedy at his inauguration. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we have some time left, if I could suspend the rule and ask to take 6.2 informational report out of order?
Motion by Councilor Noon, take 6.2, seconded by Councilor Mercier, all's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Mr. Manager, 6.2. Official report presentation by LHA on Rivers Edge Project. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. We thought it'd be appropriate, and thank you very much, Councilor, for asking these questions, to make sure that we could come up today to find out what's happening with the Lowell Housing Authority and all the wonderful things. If you could take it away, Mr. Director?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, member of the council, and Mr. Manager, my name is Todd Chan. I'm the executive director of the Lowell Housing Authority. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. The redevelopment of the former Julian Steele project, also known as the Rivers Edge, is the product of Chapter 97, legislation enacted in 2002, authorized the Lowell Housing Authority to redevelop the outdated housing project. Approximately seven years ago, due to the rising cost of infrastructure and construction, the construction of new housing units was suspended after completing 155 units. Now, with the availability of potential $8 million Commonwealth Builder grant, the final phase of this project, the final phase of this development is possible. Due to the demand of more affordable housing within our city and the potential and feasibility of funding availability, Lowell Housing Authority, working in conjunction with the Resident First Development Corporation, proposed to develop 32 units. And we'll sell all 32 units to families with 80 to 100% of area median income. Currently, we are waiting for the approval, legislative approval, to authorize the Lowell Housing Authority to move forward with 32 construction of this unit. When approved, Lowell Housing Authority and the Resident First Development Corporation will move forward with completing the application submitted to Commonwealth Builder Program. I want to thank the entire council and Mr. Manager for your continued support in our effort to provide more affordable housing in our city. At this time, we'll welcome any question or concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Chan. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd first like to say thank you to LHA. I mean, you guys have been a great community partner. You have a proven track record of managing many properties throughout the city, and as you mentioned, with, with right now, housing on the forefront of everyone's minds, I'm seeing in Boston, organizations like the Yaki Foundation have just contributed $15 million for the development of more public housing properties. So it's great to see that you're taking advantage of all kinds of grant applications and everything that's available for the community, and greatly appreciated. Hopefully, we can keep pushing the bar and increasing the stock for inventory because we all know it's desperately needed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, and I'd also echo my colleague's sentiment about what a great part of LHA is, what the city. I do just have one question in here. It says that they would have to be free of inclusionary zoning requirements. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Well, the legislation called for 180 units total. Among those 180 units, there's 90 of them that have to be sold under the 80% of median income, and 63 is 53, 63 must be sold at 50% of median income. If we are to construct the unit and sell it 50% of median income, it's, the price is $163,000. The number doesn't work. So due to the rising cost, we asked the legislator to allow us, to release us from that inclusionary zoning, so that we can sell it at 80% to 100% of median income. That's the whole thing, and also release us from the deed restriction, which originally required to be in perpetuity. The Commonwealth Builder Grant only allow up to 30 years deed restriction, and also request to increase the production of affordable housing from 25 to 32. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for coming down, and a couple of board members are here, so appreciate the support and what you do for housing. It's desperately needed and look forward to working forward and seeing this project through. Thank you.
Very much.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to echo Director Chan, the appreciation for the council, particularly the managers, in terms of allocating some funding to do the, to allow the LHA to do feasibility study in this area. So now they're on their way to asking the legislators for the, relieve them from deed restrictions, so that instead of doing 25 units, they're now going ahead doing 32 units because of the cost of construction and so on. So I appreciate Director Chan coming down here to give us an update on the progress right now before the legislature. The question I have for Director Chan is that what can be the council and/or the manager do in terms of, to help move this along, get past the legislation?
At this point, when it comes to legislation, and that is the area that I possess no knowledge in, right now, I believe it's sitting in the subcommittee, and I'm not sure when it's going to go past that, so we're just waiting. And so it's contingent upon the approval before we can start the process.
What can the managers and the city council do to help?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, that's a great question. I believe that a letter is in order, and obviously, if this council so wishes, we can move forward with a lobbying effort on behalf of Lowell Housing Authority to talk to the senator and as well as the three representatives, and make those, you know, additional phone calls to the, to the committee that is down there to help the Lowell Housing Authority make this a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councilor Robinson?
Can I put that in the form of a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Robinson to put a letter forward to the delegation, seconded by Councilor Noon, all's in favor, say aye. Name, motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chan, for the presentation and your time coming down. Sabria, thank you as well. With that being said, motion accepted, placed on file by Councilor Janess, seconded by Councilor Leahy. Still before 7:00 p.m., we can start some of the motions. 5.1, Councilor Mercier, request city manager find ways and means to have DPW clear clutter, furniture, et cetera, out of the third-floor hallway at City Hall, which may pose a fire hazard, seconded by Councilor Noon. Councilor Mercier?
Can I just say I'm shocked out of my mind because I am so, so grateful and thank you for the job well done. I, I don't know, just for the heck of it, I snuck up to the third floor just to take an overview of what I saw before, and it is magnificent. I am so proud of this city for clearing that out, because I never thought it, I think this is a record-breaking first time that a motion was done so quickly, and I'm very, very grateful and thankful for everything that took place. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, that should have never got to that situation, and Councilor, I apologize, but it was like moths to a flame. You know, one thing was there and it was fine, and then it ended up being what you had seen, Councilor. So we had taken care of it, and I want to say thank you very much to DPW for making that happen, because it ended up becoming a problem.
You just made my day. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilor.
So we'll take that as a motion completed, Councilor. 5.2, Councilor Mercier, request parks recreation subcommittee reconvene a meeting of parks to further discuss policies and procedures that were previously worked on, seconded by Councilor Robinson. Councilor Mercier?
Yes, thank you very much. This is a motion that speaks for itself. Previously, in the ending of last year, we did meet, and we noticed that the handbook is rather old for the Board of Parks. We are going to review it and amend it, and so the, the subcommittee meeting of parks and recreation, which is Eric Getchea, John Leahy, and myself, we're going to meet and hold that joint subcommittee, refer this motion to the Board of Parks, to the Parks Subcommittee Meeting together next Tuesday at 5:30. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, motion passes. 5.3, Councilor Noon, request city manager update the city council on the city's new equity and inclusion fund, seconded by Councilor Yem. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few years ago, Councilors Elliott, and I believe Councilor Elliott and Councilor Samaris have asked the council to set up a fund for the DEI. So I just want to know, because I haven't heard anything about it, just to see whether or not, you know, we have that fund in place and that we, also, the question was that can we ask the, the citizen or the resident of Lowell to donate to the fund? So I think we did do that, so I want to know, I want an update on it as to how much fund now available and what do we use it for? Now, given that we have the, just recently, we have a committee that the managers, the council was approve it, approve it, and asking the manager to set up that committee, and that committee will be in charge of, to some extent, using that front, fund to see where it's fit.
All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, motion passes. 5.4, Councilor Noon, request city manager provide a report regarding Mass Hire and the status of employment and any grant availability, seconded by Councilor Leahy. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mass Hire with the, the Career Center is funded by the US Department of Labor's, and that we use that in connections, kind of connecting the job seekers to businesses and businesses to job seekers. And I know that Lowell have done a very fantastic job under Shannon Norton, I believe. So I know that some of the people that use, the customers of Mass Hire, just want to know whether or not, because some of them do not have transportation, so we want to know how many of the customer of Mass Hire do like, I heard of a while back, do ride. Do ride where you do a $2 share ride, so to speak. And I just want to know also, is that how many of our customer of Mass Hire use, do like that service? So the report and, and question around the number of customers of Mass Hire use, do ride to and from work has also been helpful to see where we go from here.
Good. Councilor Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Mr. Manager, I hope you include in that report the amazing work that Mass Hire, the Career Center does for the youth in this city by providing them the jobs that they have that actually provide a lot of lower-income kids, the youth, to be able to get permits, driver's license, and help them actually become, attain jobs where they can get to. And without that program, you'd see a lot of kids that, that were not actually being trained into positions and given valuable skills, and I know the city uses them in City Hall and other places, and I think that that's the way you build a community, is you start giving these kids these skills and these goals, and we said it, because that program is an amazing program for these kids, and I wish everybody could see them work in the, what it provides for our community, if you could just highlight that in, in there also. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Nay, motion passes. Time for one more. 5.5, Councilor Noon, request city manager provide the city council information regarding major projects of the city. city manager provide the city council information regarding major projects of the city and financial update for said projects. Seconded by Counselor Scott, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself.
Excellent. Being 7:00 PM, we can now head to the public hearings. Section 4, utility public hearing, 4.1, National Grid, request installation of one J.O. pole at development at 733 Broadway Street. You have Mr. Eng here to, to help us out. We'll start off, we're gonna open it in favor. All in favor?
Vasna Eng, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Danover, Mass. Representing National Grid. So we're looking to seek petition approval to install pole, I believe it's 37-50, approximately 85 feet east and 20 feet north to the center line of Schaefer Street and Broadway. This pole is needed in order to facilitate 733 Broadway with utilities.
Speaking in favor, in favor. Section of the hearing is closed. All in opposition, opposition. The section of the meeting is closed as well. Is anybody here from the public room to speak on this? I did get a phone call. Sir, come on up.
I'm Charles McMenamin. I'm from 741 Broadway Street. The pole that they're gonna put in is right in front of my driveway. I'd like to have it moved five feet or 10 feet over from either other side so I can have access to my driveway.
Yeah. Mr. Eng, I did get a phone call concerning this a couple of days ago. Would it be possible just to maybe speak with the neighbor and then the manager's office just to get cleared up before installation? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Good. So Mr. Manager, may we put it off for a week? The council okay with that? All right. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks, okay? Thank you. So same thing, Mr. Eng with 4.2. Same thing? All right, great. So we'll put that off until February 12th? February 13th? Continue with February 13th. Mr. Lahey, Counselor Lahey?
Thank you. Just for the record, like, seriously, like, would it be put in the middle of a driveway? Is that the original plan?
Well, I think we have a concerned neighbor here that just, you know, under the impression that it'd be going away his driveway.
All right. I mean, obviously, we want it moved, but it just seems ridiculous that it would really be. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know you're obsessed with poles, so I'm sure we'll take.
Yeah, well, it's not a double pole.
All right. Returning to the council motions. 5.6, Counselor Yem, request city manager update the city council on the status of the use of wireless emergency alerts. Seconded by Counselor Gitchia, Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion was filed back in March of 2022 and we got the response. And then again, November of 2022, the response was by Chief Sharon and he updated the council that the process to be able to use wireless emergency alert have to be applied to this state. And then the process has already started it. So I'm hoping and then to hear the report that the city is one of the handful of the cities and towns in Massachusetts that are qualified and approved to use this wireless emergency alert. The wireless emergency alert is based on the, the cell, all the cell company, cellphone company provided for free as long as you have a cellphone or portable that is, that use wireless network to receive the emergency alert, including the, including everything else like tornadoes, things like that, that, that will broadcast through the wireless network to all the devices. Even though you don't live in Lowell, you visit Lowell, you will receive this alert as well. So I'm looking forward to this respond by Chief Sharon next. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.7, Counselor Scott, request rule, subcommittee meet to develop a rule for city council approved motions to carry forward indefinitely as open until the city council deems them answered. Seconded by Counselor Janess, Counselor Scott.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.8, Counselor Gitchia, request city manager update the city council on the restroom repairs at the Stock Close Middle School, Butler Middle School and Ashon C Elementary School. Seconded by Counselor Dakota, Counselor Getyou.
Thank you, Mayor O'Rourke. Mr. Manager, some of these work orders have been longer than a year when we look at these bathrooms. And I guess I'm just wondering, how long should it take for a work, work order? And I know they vary depending on certain things, but, and when we go to remodel bathrooms, do we go through building permits? Do, how does that work for the city? I know where I am, you have to have an architectural drawing when you talk about structure in school buildings and stuff like that. But when we look at the stock closer, you clearly see that that wasn't done. And hopefully, we can make the correction as soon as possible. And the Butler is really concerning because the bathroom's over there and also the lockers have been well over a year and we're still talking about the same thing. And I'm just hoping that with your help, we can not only get these done, but make sure that they, they fit within all of the scope of work. And they are expensive. But when you hear people talk about restrooms and students and you hear them say that, you know, student vandalism is the reason why that these things are done. Some of these schools are 20 years old, you know, and you've got kids going back and forth. They open them a lot more than they do at your home bathroom. And, and they do wear out quick and the hardware on the hinges get broken. And if they're not serviced right away, that door just caves in and it falls down. So it's not due to vandalism when something's 20 years old. It's due to just, it aged out. So I don't want people to think there's a misconception here that students went in and kicked down all these dividers and now we're gonna have to put block up there so that, you know, some 11-year-old can't kick over a petition because that simply is not the truth. It's just, we just have to look at these issues, come up with a good design that actually would work forward. And I'm hoping that you can come back with a response quick enough that we can get these resolved fast because every day we close one of those doors and lock it, you're sending kids further away. There's more mischief. There's more time out of a classroom. And I'm hoping that we can get that resolved fast. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.9, Counselor Gitchia, request city manager update the city council on the intersection of Chelmsford Street and Cambridge Street. Seconded by Counselor Dakota, Counselor Getyou.
Mr. Manager, I know there was a response on this at one point back a couple of years ago. I believe it was Mayor Chow at the time who put in this motion. And I'm just hoping that we can have an update on trying to get some signals over there, that Cambridge and Chelmsford Street area. It's extremely tough where that tire warehouse is right there. It's just a tough area to get out of. It's kind of like the Stedman and Westford Street, you know, it's just, it gets real bottlenecked and there's a lot of buses from LRTA come out of there. It's just a tough area. So if we can get that moving along again, I know that signals take time, but and there's an expense, but if we can look for avenues to gain resources to try to make that happen. Thank you.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the updated motion, Counselor Getyou, especially the Glory Buddhist Temple. When there is event and they come out from the Cambridge Street, the temple, it's very hard to make a turn onto Chelmsford Street due to the fact that the traffic on Chelmsford Street is really heavy. So therefore, there's a lot of backed up. A good thing that the temple did is to hire police officers, officer to direct, help direct traffic during event at the Glory Buddhist Temple. So if you could, Mr. Manager, could look at it and, you know, and take care of that, that would be greatly appreciated by the community, especially the Glory Buddhist Temple. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Dakota?
Without, without a doubt, a good, a good motion. It is just as bad as Westford and Stedman and something definitely needs to be done over there. I appreciate the motion from Counselor Getyou.
Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Counselor Gitchia for refiling this motion. As other counselors have mentioned, this is a very, very busy and dangerous intersection. I drive, if you pull up from Cambridge Street, it's sort of upward angle a little bit and Chelmsford Street, the main street intersection, it's wide and there's some blind spots. I feel that the people that pull over Cambridge Street onto Chelmsford Street, whether turning left or turning right. They really have to gun for it because the traffic on Chelmsford Street, they, they do go pretty fast when there's less traffic and, but it get really chaotic when it gets busy. Either way, at any time of the day, it gets really dangerous for the drivers coming out of Cambridge Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.10, Counselor Robinson, request city manager begin conversations on a possible partnership with Lowell Catholic with focus on improvements to fields they are utilizing for athletics. Seconded by Counselor Scott, Counselor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, oh, Counselor Getyou. No mistake.
Thank you, Mayor O'Rourke. Mr. Manager, do we require anybody who rents our fields to bring them up, to do work on them?
Mr. Manager?
I apologize, Counselor. I couldn't hear you.
Do we require anybody who leases or rents our fields to upkeep them? Or do they just contribute to the city? Or how does that work?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, I apologize. That was, that was on me. No, we don't, I mean, they clean, they, they try to do the best they can. They try to leave it better than they, they found it, but they're not over there doing something per se in regards to, say, cutting the lawn or emptying the garbage or anything like that. So they do not do that.
I, I know this, that there were issues with rentals with some schools, because I actually do that and they rent areas that we have. And the expense piece is always tough for these private schools to even pay out because of whatever the reason is. But I, I understand what Counselor Robinson's saying, but at the end of the day, if we use them, why wouldn't they be up kept to a point that they wouldn't, they're, they're renting something. So it should be up kept to the point where it's usable and meets the needs.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So they pay, Counselor, they pay the permit fee, of course, like every, well, I don't want to say like everybody, some of our own do not pay permit fees. But they pay a permit fee, but I haven't heard any complaints about, say, this particular, if, if we get complaints from parks that such and such an organization leaves it a mess, you know, there is a discussion to be had with that. That's not happening in this situation, but not to my knowledge do they do anything extra, if you would. Then they pay their permit fee and they leave it better than they found it. And that means, you know, sending the kids around, I'm sure picking up the bottles and the cans or whatever the case may be. But maybe that's something we can expand upon, looking to see how Lowell Catholic obviously is looking to, to have what I would say a home field, if you would. This is a discussion that's been going on for, I think, a little bit, well, probably since I've been here for the last couple of years. And we're just trying to figure out the right way, if it can, can indeed be done.
I think our challenge in the city with the parks revenue is that we give out blanket permits. So now people have ownership of something for a very long period of time every single day. And we're losing revenue in other places when they're not even on those fields. So we really should only define it down to block rentals because at this point, some people have it from sunup to sundown on a field and you drive by, take Calvary Park, you can drive by Calvary Park every day. And there's hardly anybody even on it anymore because since they put together the youth group, that's like a practice field and not really used as much as it once was. So, but it's blocked out and, and you can't really get on it. So I think we have to really dial in our rentals in the blocks that we give based off of that so that others can actually have the opportunity to use these fields and we can gain revenue. And we should have more money to actually do the repairs. But that's just my look at, when I look at these parks and you see them, nobody's on them. And then when you ask about the permit, it's taken from sunup to sundown, all the way from April to July. So I just think we need to look at how we permit out those parks and the, and the revenue that's gained from them.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. This motion came from preliminary conversations with members of the Lowell Catholic staff. Pretty much, Gauge Field, perfect example. I'd say 65% or better usage up there, especially on the soccer fields, is in fact Lowell Catholic, which they, they bus across the city to utilize for lack of any fields near their property. The field's not in the greatest condition. And then this was more of an attempt to be collaborative, to improve the conditions, to provide a good surface and kind of as the city manager touched on, if they'd be interested in establishing almost a home base for the team that's been using it and, and whatever that, that looks like, a partnership to, to improve the quality of the playing surface, let's have the conversation. It's, it's not to single out and say they should or shouldn't. It's just seeing, are they capable of, are they willing to? Because again, Gauge is, is a tricky situation as any Centerville residents are aware. I mean, we have buses parked on Beacon Street because there's games going on and, and we're bringing other schools into Gauge Field, which is not the best condition. It, it bottlenecked the traffic at rush hour coming up and down Beacon Street. So I mean, there's a lot that goes on in that little area. And so that's why I think, you know, a collaborative conversation between the administration and Lowell Catholic and see, can we find something that works for everybody? Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.11, Counselor Robinson, request city manager have the law department draft ordinance requiring all contractors and subcontractors working on city construction projects valued at over 1 million employ apprentices registered in a bona fide apprentice training program and establishing minimum apprentice ratios. Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. This is something where, again, you can't demand, obviously, project labor agreements or whatever. That was hashed out. But we always talk about providing training and, and introducing people in the community into opportunities to be able to provide for themselves down the road, skill sets. This is a way that we can look at potentially helping people in the community get involved with the skilled trades, get into an apprenticeship position and be employed in their backyard. So I think this is a win-win for the community. It's a win-win for trades and, and skills. And then I think it allows people the opportunity to develop something. And, and I mean, this has been done in other communities, apprenticeship requirements. And, and what that looks like, again, there's a lot of legal ramifications. So I think it's something that the solicitor can take a look at, hopefully, and, and come back with what he sees other communities are doing. Because we already have different organizations in the, in the community that are working to develop kids' skills and to develop community member's skills. So why not offer them employment opportunities in their own backyard? Thank you.
Counselor Getyou?
I believe this might be one of the motions that was co-sponsored by myself and Counselor Drinkwater at the time. So if that is, if you can just put that refiled one on with this and just combine them. So whatever answer comes back can just be that. So we can take that one off of my 39. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.12, Counselor Robinson, request city manager have proper department provide a detailed timeline, including scope of work for cleanup of all city green space, as well as a report with corrective, correction timeline on damage caused by winter operations. Seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. This is just something that, you know, every spring, it's, we see some areas, contractors end up damaging, whoever is damaging chunks of green space and we end up running around picking up the pieces. So I mean, the sooner we can identify those problems and come up with a, a plan of attack to correct it, the sooner we can get back to the work that I know our people are already burdened with as far as ball fields and all the spring cleanup stuff. So, thank you.
Counselor Lahey?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. With this motion also, again, this is almost like an impossible task when we try to clean up all the parks and the streets and schools and with the staffing that we have. So I'm looking forward to this budget season where we can hopefully come up with a total reorg of DPW and look at facilities, streets, parks. And what are the, what's the management style we should have? What's the proper amount of labor we should have? And I think this plays a big part into it because we just don't have the, the staffing to do this, you know? And, and are we updating with on-time information through iPads or whatever we need to use? So kind of looking forward to that. The motions have been in and I'm hoping that if there's enough time, we can come up with a, a detailed plan and see what it looks like. And hopefully during budget season, we can debate it and see what we need to do to properly, you know, take care of the, the city the way we should be doing it. Thank you.
Counselor Getyou?
Thank you, Mayor O'Rourke. Last year, we asked about plow damage from the contractors and who actually pays it. Just maybe a week or two ago, I had to contact DPW Commissioner St. Seer about a plow contractor who got aggressive and went across somebody's lawn and he said he would take care of it and he did rapidly. But the question is, is But, the question is, is that contractor responsible for the damage that they're doing, and are we sending them back to do? Because if we're taking our resources and running them after all the damage that the contractors are doing, then we can't utilize them the way that Counsel Leahy or Counsel Robinson is suggesting. So, I think that we really have to define, okay, damage is done, who actually did it, and send the right people over there, because right now, I think the city has taken on all of the damage, of everything that's done during the plowing operation, which some I can understand is, you know, just, okay, we just touched the lawn and fixed it, but some of it is just like total neglect, like when the manager met me on Pine Street, and the person pushed it all the way across Florence, and right onto the guy's wall, and you're like, okay, at some point, this is neglect by the plow contractor. So, in timeline, you know, of course, timeline's always going to be subjective to whether that we get towards April, so, I'd be interested, again, to see how can we reorganize, and can we understand where we're going. It's the same with the facilities department, I think that they're very important to try to get some of this stuff defined in, and put everything together, so, I thank Counsel Robinson for this motion.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Let me just be clear on this. Fifteen years, we did this work, it was never, you know, we don't have the staff or this, I mean, it's easy to make excuses why you can't do something, but realistically, first, we have spotters. Spotters' main responsibility is to keep an eye on a contractor over a route. There should be a running list of damages that the spotters identify, and if they know the contractor's working that route, they should be able to key in and say, hey, look at, let's get over here, let's have a meet. And I've seen it a million times in 15 years. They'd call the contractor back over, who's assigned to the route, and say, this is what happened. Now, the contractors have to have an insurance bond to work for the city, that's part of the package. They have insurance that covers these kind of damages. So, there are already mechanisms in place, it's just a matter of using what we have at our disposal, and operating efficiently. I mean, it's, all of this, we can't do. I'm not even saying that all of this should be corrected in-house, and if you read the motion, it's basically, do we have a list of the damages? What is the game plan to correct these damages? Now, whether that's having contractors come back, reimburse, that's administrative rights, that's not, I'm not trying to micromanage on how this gets done. I'm asking, what are we looking at? Do we have a preparedness plan for this? Because every spring, sure is, the ice melts, and garbage pops up, we're going to see damages, so, we're in January now, we have some time ahead of us. If we can get ahead of this, when the ice melts, we'll be a lot better off. And, again, a lot of these things are already in place. The insurance packages required of contractors coming in to work for the city should cover damage. Bridge Street, that wall sat damaged for I don't know how long, and thankfully, it was corrected in-house by our masons. Now, whether that was damaged internally or not, I couldn't even tell you, but the spotter assigned to that area should have had a running list of that damage. I mean, it's common sense, if you're spotting and keeping an eye on contractors, keep a running list of damages that you see, and address them as they pop up. Thank you.
All's in fairness, aye, opposed, no, motion passes. Someone's making a motion, it could take 5.13 and 5.14 together, by Counsel Mercer, seconded by myself. Quickly, 5.13, by myself, Mayor Rock, requests city manager have property department work with state and federal partners for greater opportunities for addiction and homelessness. 5.14, requests city manager start discussions with Lowell Transitional Living Center and other partners to improve housing and services. These motions came from, first of all, thank you, Counsel Mercer, thank you. These came about with the announcement last week of the Sheriff's Department looking to find a centralized location for those that have the addiction or some criminal behavior going on, to avoid, you know, maybe going to the police station, going somewhere where they get some triage help, and sent to the right resources throughout the city. Hoping somewhere, Mr. Manager, we can tie in the Transitional Living Center as well. I know there's a lot of space that's required, and talking to the sheriff, I don't know where that space is, no idea, I know there's ad hoc subcommittee going to be created pretty soon, concerning some spots throughout the city, but if possible, if we can just start that conversation and see what the possibilities are. I think it'd be very beneficial, both for the homeless that stay at the Transitional Center, and for the city, if that could ever possibly move out of the current spot that's in now, so, maybe it's just a Hail Mary, but see if something could possibly happen. Counsel Gutia?
I think these are excellent motions, Mayor Rock. Not that you need my endorsement, but on the homeless issue, we haven't seen the numbers in a while, from the homeless director, on how many are out there, how many beds are available, and are we moving in a direction? And if we could see those as soon as, I just think, you know, we just have to get down there more often, and if they need, I would love to actually have the counsel invited down on one of these go-throughs, and just see exactly, how do we communicate, how does it go on? I don't know if the rest of the council would love to go for a walk, but I just think it would be an interesting piece for us to learn more about exactly what's being offered down there, and what we're doing. So, I like these motions, I think that we just have to see, as a counsel, okay, what is being offered at this time of year, and what do we have to offer? Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Again, I'd echo, thank you for the motions, and I think a huge key piece, from everything we've heard, 5.14, I agree. I think we've heard tons of problems with the conditions in Lowell Transitional Living Center, and that's just by default, the nature of the business, and that's nationwide, and again, with materials and construction, it's not cheap, so, I mean, I think this is a great motion to look at, improving the quality of living conditions for the people that really need that hand up, so, thank you.
Counsel Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I echo Counsel Gutierrez and Counsel Robinson. It's very good motions, the issues of addictions and homelessness, it's not going to go away, and we, the city, and the taxpayer cannot be at the brink. I mean, we need to get out to the state and the federal for help here, because, again, now, we service not just the people of Lowell, but the people elsewhere, surrounding towns as well, so, the winters is right here, and we do need help, big time. As far as the Lowell Transitional Living Centers, you know, I know they've done their job, and they could do better, so, you know, you just want to see improvement in service that they provide, and service, when we speak of services, they not only, the only agency provide service in term of addiction and mental health and whatnot, we have a lot of good partners in the areas, you know, so, whatever we get here from the state and the federal certainly will help, not only us, but also help this other nonprofit organization that provides service to the homeless populations as well, so, thank you for, you know, bringing this motion up, and so, we hope to get good answers from the state and the federal in term of resource. Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, a great motion, especially 5.14, the Lowell Transitional Living Center. This is just a question to maybe Mr. Manager, people keep asking, is that a way to relocate the, you know, the center to a bit out of, because right there, and then, it's become a commercial center hub for the downtown, and with the Living Transition Center, it kind of deters some people from go down there, particularly on the businesses where the registry, motor vehicle, all that, restaurants, and stuff like that, so, it's been asked many, many, many years now, so, I'm hoping that you may have the conversation, or looking, or long-term plan, things like that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All's in fairness, aye, opposed, motions both pass. Section 6, communication from the city manager, A and B have already been answered. Motion response C, report on cyber incidents impact on hiring process. Comments? All right. D, motion response, scofflaw property owners with attachment. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for the report back, but it seems like the city of Boston is a lot more robust than just putting out a list of, you know, landlords that have been repeat violators. I think the reason this was filed was, it imposes a slight penalty, so to say, and it restricts people from being able to apply from a lot of valuable resources that they might otherwise be able to access. I know in the report, it says that internal departments are in constant communication, but staffing is limited, and so, this is not, I think the city of Boston has pretty much figured out their staffing is limited, and that's why it came out with this scofflaw policy. So, I think just putting a list out there wouldn't really accomplish what this motion set out to do. Thank you.
Counsel Gutia, Counsel Scott?
Manager Golden, go ahead. You can, did you want to speak? Okay, I'm sorry. I would agree, I think that, you know, constant communication really doesn't tell us anything, it just says, people are in constant communication, so I really don't know what that means, and the list thing, I would agree with Counsel Robinson on that. I just hope that we could get more involved, I think it would work much better for our community to see this implemented, and start holding people accountable, so, I just hope that we can get a better report going forward on this piece.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would echo my colleague's sentiments, I really liked this motion when it came out, because, you know, Boston, Chicago, the response that we received, they did have kind of a punitive nature to them, which I do think is needed for some of these out-of-city real estate owners. The same people are being called on over and over again, you know, I mean, I call in, and it's, oh, not that one again, you know? And this is way more than three strikes, you're out, I mean, this is repeated violations for me, in Central Street, Mead Street, you know, we saw Branch Street, how many times that happened. I saw in Chicago, it said they can't pull veriances, permits, they can't acquire property, they can't make zoning changes, apply for TIFs. So, I think this does fall short of what we need to do, and I would hope it would be sent back to look a little further into what Chicago and Boston are trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, and, yeah, I'd like to completely echo, there's no teeth, just putting a list out there, it's no teeth at all, and so, I would like to send this back as well, if we have to put that in the form of a motion, could we send this back and see if we can, oh?
Yeah, stand by. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, there's no teeth, we need teeth. Even if we don't use the teeth, having the teeth is important. I think getting something on the books, so that it empowers the administration to really hold folks responsible. And I understand, you know, the hesitancy, things like Boston's ordinance doesn't allow people to do things, even if they correct issues on their property, but we could address that as part of the ordinance, you know? If people address all their issues, and are good for three months, six months, you want to take them off the list, I'd be okay with that, I don't know how my colleagues feel. But, I feel like this gives us an opportunity to really hold people's feet to the fire here, who have created a real quality of life issue for many of our residents, whether the residents of these buildings, or neighbors, you know, absentee landlords is a thing we hear time and time again, as a problem that's facing our neighborhoods and our residents, and I think putting an ordinance like this on the books would go a long way to giving the administration the powers it needs to really hold people responsible, and really let them know that if you're going to own property in Lowell, you need to be part of the community, you need to be rowing in the same direction as the rest of us. So, I'm happy to make that motion, refer it back for further study.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilors, I just, I'm trying to get a point of clarification from this, we're all on the same page, I believe. So, what happens currently right now is, if you're even going to be considered for this list, you've already been fined. So, there's been a violation, there's been a fine, or in some instances, we may give a warning. In the event that said property owes any type of taxes, or they have violations, or any, one violation, or multiple violations, they cannot pull a permit. The only thing that was different here, and this is the point of clarification for me, I believe we're already, once again, in order to be put on this list, you already have to have fines. Things are already happening for you, or things, you know, things are already happening, or you're not paying attention. Similar to what we're doing with the vacant and foreclosed property in the downtown area, we're just not putting anyone there, we're actually fining them, similar to how we would do it in any one of the neighborhoods. My understanding of this was, we would be putting this together for everybody to see, that people would know how that such-and-such a street, or such-and-such a property was under fined, and therefore, could not receive a fine, taxes, could not get a permit, and could not do anything until they clarified this. Now, in the city of Boston, what they do, I think, and I'm assuming this, they make an exception if somebody has a problem, that they can still apply for grants, provide A, B, and C. I'm glad to take this back and rework it, but once again, I think from the administration's standpoint, I think that any property that potentially would be on this list already has fines on it, we've already been hitting them. I just, so, I'm looking for a little bit of thought process, or gladly take it back, we can take this offline, and tell me what you're thinking. Mr. Mayor? Counsel?
Counsel Janess?
Thank you. I think one thing, there might be a bit of disagreement here, or just not a meeting of minds, is that it's not so much the property specifically, but the owner, the landlord. ABC 123 Realty Corporation owns 65 properties in the city, they've let 10 of them go to pot, doesn't mean they can let the other 55 and do whatever they want to do there. They really got to pull their weight across the city, and, you know, and I think that they need to know that. They can't get away with leaving a house in Centerville a mess, as long as they keep their Belvedere ones up, you know, we can't allow that.
Just quickly to Counsel Janess and other councilors' points, maybe eight years ago, I know Counsel Mercer and Counsel Leahy were on board with the Problem Property Task Force that really attacked owners and landlords of properties, just like Counsel Janess stated, it was more of the person or the owner of the property, not just the property itself. I think the city came up with maybe 10 or 12 property owners that really paid no attention. I think actually, maybe Mr. Machado was on that task force at the time, so he should probably know about it, and maybe the kind of direction that this counsel wants to go in, or something like that, Mr. Manager. Any other comments by the council? Counsel Scott?
Just to clarify what the manager's saying, so, as far as it not being an ordinance, not being, you know, just, it's not in our ordinances, as far as like not allowing permits across the board, like Counsel Janess is saying, those are things that have to be put into an ordinance form, like the process that we're going to follow, if, you know, you get three or four, you know, building violations, then you are not going to get X, Y, and Z, that wouldn't be something that would have to be in ordinance like Boston? I don't know if that's a question for the solicitor or not.
Sure, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, if it's okay, well, you're asking me to take it back anyways.
Motion was made by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Gutia, returns to the manager for clarification, and a little more.
And if it's okay, I might reach out to some of the councilors to make sure, but I think we're all on the same page with this particular piece. Counsel Janess brings up a point, and the ABC Corporation that also owns CD and E LLC would have to check on the legality, I think, of that, holding people accountable, so, if that, I know the council wants this, so we'll bring it back, we'll try to clarify it, but I do believe we're all on the same page. Once again, all of these folks that would end up on the scofflaw property list have already been visited by our DDS Department, probably with multiple fines, you wouldn't get here just for one. So, pull this back, if that's okay with the council, as your request, and I'll probably reach out to a few of you if you're interested in expounding on this, and bringing it back in a different form.
Justice Sosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I had to get rid of something in my throat there. Yeah, so, based off of everything I've heard tonight, I think it does make sense to bring that back, and probably put it in the form of an ordinance, just based off of all the feedback, I think that probably makes the most sense.
Excellent, so, motion was made and seconded, all's in fairness, aye, motion passes. Response E, motion response, Purple Carrot Sidewalk, Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I appreciate the report, again, you know, with the vaults down, it's, that's kind of hairy, but I'm glad to see that the work still goes on, they're plugging away. Is there any way we could potentially, maybe through you to the city solicitor? I know for quite some time since I've got on, we've been having a difficult time to try to get a detailed inventory of the vaults, because trying to get ahold of ABC Parent Corporation that owns it, that doesn't respond, or no one's letting you Corporation that owns it, that doesn't respond, or no one's letting you in, is there any way that we could potentially impose a fine or something to say, look, hey, we're going to make three attempts, and if we can't get in, we need to do something to catalog the vaults in the downtown, so that way we can, I mean, I know it's going to be, it's hard work. And is there other ways without physically walking in? Is there technology that would allow them to at least scan and be able to see voids underneath the sidewalks, so at least you get a general idea of, okay, well, this is empty below us. We don't know what's down there, we don't know how it's connected, but at least we could start to map what it looks like below surface.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Counsel, you're correct with all the points you made. DPD has done a pretty good job with keeping track of how many vaults we do have, and there are instances when we start to ask said organization, can we come in to check the vault? And we have not been granted that access. I know when I first got here, I'd asked the previous city solicitor to send out a reminder, in my opinion, and I believe it's the correct legal opinion, that people that own these vaults are, they could be held liable if something were to go wrong. And it's just basically letting people know that there is potential liability on their part, thinking that, hey, by the way, I have a vault, let's add it to DPD's list. So I think that maybe, Mr. Solicitor, that we could put together an ordinance for this particular matter, to request or ask that people do follow this. We have had conversations, just so folks know, with a couple of folks that own vaults that are very happy to be helpful. They've already gone through the process by which securing their building, and we are in the process to find out what the actual cost of that. Now, some of this is in the downtown, some of this is in what I would maybe refer to as the greater downtown, a little bit outside of the downtown area. So this has been plaguing the city for, I think, a decade plus with these issues. But every point that you hit, Counsel, was correct. Some people are very forthright, some people don't want to tell us, but, Mr. Solicitor, if we could put together an ordinance for this and for the council's consideration, if that's okay? If that's okay with the council? Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Counsel Getche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Do we know how long we've been working with the property owner at 107 Merrimack Street on this vault issue?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Yes, he is one of the folks that have been very helpful to getting this accomplished. It is my understanding he is already taking care of the walls in his basement. So basically, what happens in a very quick manner, these vaults have a void in the basement of the particular building. Those buildings need to contact a structural engineer, the structural engineer needs to come in, they need to rebuild their wall. That done for the building owner, then at that time, they're reaching out to us to find out what the cubic foot would be, what are we putting in there, what can be put in there. And now, we actually have to redo the sidewalk. So there's a lot to go in on this particular piece. You know, once again, who's to pay for this? We do have money set aside for this from this council and previous councils. We don't pay to secure the building, and once again, to secure the building, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm saying is to build that wall that isn't there. If you've not been in a vault, it's probably difficult to see or to understand, but I've only been in a vault a couple of times, but they have to rebuild the concrete wall down there to secure their building prior to us putting additional material, whether it be dirt, or whatever the case may be, to fill that void. Counsel, I hope that's answering your question, and you may.
So for the last couple of years, we've been talking about this project down there that we've had major issues. I'm just wondering if this property owner was one of the ones originally who jumped in and said, okay, we're going to start the repairs before the issue happened, or did this happen, we saw the hole in the sidewalk, and here we are? I guess going forward, I would ask, and I hope I have enough support for it, is can we get an inventory of all the ones downtown that we're currently working with, and the expected timeline of completion of these things? Because the worst thing that happens is we drive equipment across those sidewalks to clean them and everything else, and there's a lot of walking traffic. When we have the City of Lights Parade, there's a lot of things that are heavy, and when you look at, like bridges are designed for traffic to have certain spaces across them, not all together. And when you put everybody together on that sidewalk, what is, where are we at, and how are we moving forward? So my question would be, is can we get an inventory of the vaults downtown, and can we get a timeline on repairs and conditions of them? And that's all I would ask.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. We do have an inventory, I believe Ms. Rose, it's 55, does that sound like the number-ish in the downtown areas? There are some that are, once again, very helpful, exactly what Counsel Robbins was saying, and others are not. But that is something that the particular person you're talking about, we are now trying to find out through engineering as to what we need, what we can put into this vault. It's important to know that the city of Lowell does not own these vaults, and the right-of-way, which is above these vaults, is a right-of-way. There's a lot of trickiness going on with this. I'm not going to legally say anything about this, but we don't own the vaults themselves. So the next step that we have, and we are working with this gentleman, to find out what it's going to take, and what the appropriate fill, backfill would be, and then we're going to have to fix the sidewalk. So there's a lot going on here, and I gladly, we can share immediately, and then if the other folks, maybe we could get that through the ordinance that might be passed by this council.
Can we send out a certified letter to all 55 again, putting them on notice again, just currently because of the snow loads and everything that are going on? We have no idea how much snow is coming, how wet it's going to be, those sidewalks. It reminds me of the Smith Baker. We know there's an issue over there, we got to do something about it, and here we are down there with snow loads, machines, and everything on these things, and we could, I'm not saying anybody's at risk, but we know that we have a hole out there. If we could just send a certified letter out to these 55 and get an update and say, hey, here we are, and you need to move forward, or we need to have some kind of plan going forward with a timeline, great for all of us. And you may have already done that, and I don't know, but if we could just re-up it, show the urgency again, and say, here we are again. Because, you know, as we're looking, you've got people very concerned down there, and that's all I would ask.
Mr. Manager. Oh, thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. I just would like to add that one of my pet peeves when we're talking about the vaults and the sidewalks and everything, are the grates that are over some of the vaults and some of the intersections. Some of them look a little sketchy to me. I don't know what rights we as a city have to say, hey, Mr. Building Owner, you need to, you know, secure this grate. But I know a couple of years ago, in New York, there were some folks that fell through some of those grates and had some injuries, and I'd really like to not have Lowell be in the news for a similar thing. So if we're working on this vault problem anyway, if we could figure out a way to really kind of take a look at those grates that are above the vaults across the downtown, that they're, you know, up to snuff and can hold the weight, and if not, there's a project plan in place to get that addressed as soon as possible, to, you know, reduce the risk to pedestrians and anyone else. Thank you.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit more about the vaults themselves. So the vaults are owned by the private businesses, correct? So the land under our sidewalks is owned by a private business? Okay. So do we have any way to take ownership of those vaults, like eminent domain or anything? That's one question. And then my second question is whether or not we've, as Counsel Getche brought up, have we sent out a legal letter telling people that basically, you know, that they're in danger of being sued for, you know, people being injured if anything happens above the vaults that they own? It's just a very confusing situation to me. Thank you.
Mr. Manager. Wrap this up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Counsel, yes, the previous solicitor had asked to put everybody on notice because of the liability. Our current solicitor is in the process of putting yet another letter that will be certified going out to everybody. The problem with us taking ownership is just the liability portion of it. Because if you can think of the sidewalk itself as just being an open cabin underneath, it's also open going into their building. So that's where the structural engineer needs to come in and make piers or knee walls, whichever you want to look at, to hold back the earth that we'll be putting in to secure the sidewalk.
So would that be an insurance issue for the?
Currently, right now, I mean, my position would be if something were to happen, it would be the owner of the real estate that owns the vault. That would be my position, but I'm not a lawyer, and we're trying to protect the building owners to let them know they potentially have a liability. I don't, you know, at no point at this time do we think any issue, but this is something that, in order for us to go to the next level and fill the void or fill the vault, the building owner needs to hire that structural engineer. That structural engineer needs to go in and build that wall like a typical foundation of your house. These are going into, they used to use it to deliver goods and things of that nature. So whatever you call, it would just end up going into the basement of the property owner. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but it's something that...
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, any idea when we would have the letters out? Any idea? Through you to the, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we could have those letters out by the end of the week. That's no problem.
Thank you very much. Very interesting. Thank you.
Counsel Yam, sure.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. As a property owner myself, you know, this sounds very costly to hire an engineer and all of that, and, you know, I am sympathy with the property owners that they need to hire a structural engineer. Is there a way that the property owner work with the city to kind of come up with a solution together to solve this problem? Thank you.
Great. Glad to report. Moving on, 6.3, communication resignation of Ann Mohren from Library Board of Trustees. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Leahy. All in favor? Motion passes. Communication, city manager requests out-of-state travel, Lowell Police Department, a motion to adopt by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Yam. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yam.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel DeCoto.
Yes.
Counsel Getche.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, before we go any further, could I just ask a question that people on the Disability Commission are asking me? Because you put together the list of subcommittees and the people that are on them, do we have a representative on the Commission of Disabilities? Is there a council representative on that that I didn't see? Because they're wondering, who would that be? That's just what...
Mr. Mayor, I'm just getting information, no, Counsel, we don't have a representative from the city council.
They asked me, I didn't know the answer, so there is no answer yet. Are you going to...
Counsel, that would be up to the mayor if they want to appoint somebody at some point.
Yeah, I want you on it.
More than welcome if someone wants to volunteer, I'd put somebody on it. I don't know if it's happened the past couple of terms, but if someone wants to do it, absolutely.
Do we know, I think Mr. Conway was the last one. Do we know when the meetings are, though? They used to move the meetings around there with night, morning, and...
Counselor.
It's a little different.
So I believe they're the third Thursday each month, and they meet right here in the mayor's reception room, and it's also hybrid.
But is it morning or night?
At night, 6 o'clock. And they used to have, I think somebody used to be a representative, but they don't have...
Okay. Email to the council and we'll fill it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Mr. Mayor, 7.1 and 2.
By Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Mercy, 7.1, accept or expend FY-24 AMBAC funds for Gage Field. 7.2, vote to expend FY-24 AMBAC funds for the Martin complex.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. 7.1, I plan on voting to accept, but I also would like to refer this to the parks subcommittee.
So do you want to vote tonight, or do you want to hold off and send to the subcommittee first?
I'd rather send it to the parks subcommittee. I mean, can we vote to accept, and then for discussions of it, send it to the...
I think the best process is to vote to either accept or not accept, and if it's accepted, just make a motion after that and refer it to the parks subcommittee.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I kind of understand where the counselor is coming from, and if we vote to accept $25,000 for a specific purpose at a field, and we vote for it, but we don't have that purpose, I think to refer it to the parks subcommittee, I don't know how you could get around that, because I see the situation here where it talks about what's going to be done with that money, and they're going to spend $25,000 in the parks department to install concrete slabs to anchor bleachers at the field. How many slabs do we need? That's an awful lot of money for cement to, I think there's a cheaper way to do this. I really firmly think we'd like to discuss that. So if we vote, and we vote to accept it, it has to be specifically slated for what they're asking for, and I don't agree with what they're asking for, or else I'd like to hear a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Sure. Counsel Getche.
Mayor Rock, through you to the city solicitor. If we vote this, but can those funds be used for something other than the bleachers?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, they can't. So just based off of everything that I'm hearing here first, I think you probably should go to the subcommittee first before a vote. I think that makes the most sense.
I thought these funds were supposed to be for bathrooms up there. I know we all talked about bathrooms up at Gage at one point, and I think that this, you know, again, when we pull forms and stuff, I think we can do that in-house, but I don't, or we can get someone to volunteer, but Manager Golden, if you'd...
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Counsel, it was earmarked towards bleachers, but I think with a phone call to order DCR, we can have this discussion. Typically, I've witnessed this, and I know that, I believe it was Representative Elliott that got this $25,000, it's typically for Lowell to try to get this done. So I think this is something we could maybe put into, if it's the will of the council, put it into subcommittee, and we can get that answer, but I'm pretty confident these funds are typically very flexible, provided it stays at Gage Park, typically.
So you're okay with voting this down, and then just to just go to a subcommittee beforehand? Then I would second the motion by Counsel Robinson to send it to a subcommittee.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want a clarification here. So this grant was from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Representative Elliott has asked for that grant for that specific use, is that correct?
Mr. Solicitor.
Could you repeat that, Counselor?
The $25,000 that we receive through Counsel Representative Elliott from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, specifically gearing toward Gate Field for that specific use, is that correct?
Hold off. Counsel for the manager. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Counsel, typically, it is for Gage Field.
For Gage Field, but not for the specific use?
Not specific.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be shocked, to be honest with you, if it specifically was for this purpose. It's usually just for the betterment of Gage Field.
Okay.
At times, with coming through DCR, it's the betterment of parks in the city of Lowell. But in this particular instance, you'd have to read it, but it would be for betterment of Gage Field.
I think with this clarification with my colleague, then, you know, we can use it for other things at Gate Field, because some of us know Gate Field better than other. I think Counsel Mercy has just commented that. So if that's the case...
There's a motion by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Mercy, sent to a subcommittee. All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Great. 7.2, vote to expend FY-24 AMBAC funds for Martin complex. Any questions about that before we move to a vote? No? No? All right. We have the full reading. Motion to adopt by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call. Martin Complex, to accept the money?
Just the Martin, yep, okay. Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Dakota?
Yes.
Councilor Getchea?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
11 years.
Section 8, report, subcommittee, this evening, June 30th, January 30th, 2024, rules subcommittee. Mr. Chairman, you going to do that next week?
Mr. Mayor, we'll make a report next week.
You got it. Section 9, petitions, 9.1, claim property damage. Motion to refer to Lot of Power for report recommendation by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Janess. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, passes. 9.2, miscellaneous, Jessica Lozada, request installation of a handicap pocket sign at 13 Kidman Street. Report to transportation engineer for report recommendation by Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Scott. All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Announcements? Any announcements? Councilor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the entire council and this administration, we want to wish a belated happy birthday for Assistant City Manager Sean Machado. Thank you.
I believe that Mr. Machado is the first member of the class of 93 to turn 50, councillor, so, yeah. Great. Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Mercier. Good night.